It is 7:00 AM and I will, or 7:00 PM, sorry. I will call this meeting of the Town Council regular session to order for November 1st, 2023. And as always, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councillor White, if you would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And item two on our agenda is roll call. It looks like we have two councillors out this evening. Councillor Lamatina is excused, is that correct? And do we know where councillor, do we have any information, Councillor Dornblad?
I have not heard anything.
Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is I would accept a motion to seal, I would accept a motion to seal the minutes of our non-public meeting indefinitely because it's determined that a divulgence of this information would likely render a proposed action ineffective. And do I have a motion to seal those minutes?
I will make the motion to seal the minutes.
Excellent. And do I have a second?
Second.
And Wendy, if you could call the roll, please.
Councillor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councillor White?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Councillor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Excellent. Item number three on the agenda is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to the council this evening? Waiting to see if anybody walks in. Seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:02. And item four on our agenda is the Town Council to consider acceptance of minutes. And we have one set of meeting minutes to consider this evening, and that is the regular meeting minutes from October 18th, 2023. And I would accept a motion to approve those.
I will make a motion.
Excellent. And do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Is there any discussion or changes? Councillor Glazberg?
In the section about Resolution 2023-2024-14, it says that the town will, is charged $7 to $8 per ton. It's $78 per ton is what we are charged to get rid of the, if there's only $7 to $8, it would be.
It would be different conversation. Okay. What do you call, is that in, what do you, is that like a?
Scrivener's, yeah.
Scrivener's area.
Oh, is it?
Is it?
Yeah, it's a.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent.
Substantive.
Any other discussion or changes? Okay. Wendy, if you could call the roll.
Councillor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councillor White?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Councillor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Excellent. And five is the report of the Town Manager, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on tonight's agenda is that the State of New Hampshire's Department of Revenue Administration has set the property tax rate for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024 for the town. Tax rate is $29.49 per thousand, an increase of $2.50 per thousand of assessed valuation or 9.3%. Just for a breakdown, that the town went up 52 cents, the local school went up $1.45, the state school went up 55 cents, so $2 increase for the school, and a 2 cent decrease for the county, that's where the $0.50 is. A comparison to fiscal year 2023, the town portion increased 8.3%, local school 7.9%, state education 38.7%. The county decreased 2.1%. The average single-family home value that we have on the assessed is $385,000. The average homeowner will see an increase in their tax bill of $962.50. Where the increase is going, the town is going to see a $200 increase, the combined local and state schools a $770 increase, and the county has a decrease of $7.70. The town clerk and tax collectors prepare the bills, and they are out, and they will be due on December 5th. If anybody has questions on the bills, you can call the town clerk tax collectors office. If you have questions about their property value, call the assessor at 603-659-3617, extension 1313. Just to go along with that, we are doing our statistical update in the coming year, which is the, to bring all those values up to close to 100%. We have a contract with MRI or assessors, and that's being reviewed currently by DRA, and we should have something shortly. The next item is that with three months in the new fiscal year completed, there's nothing out of the ordinary for expenditures. We have expended 31% of the budget, which is normal for this period. Revenues are still on track, with nothing, again, out of the ordinary. Motor vehicle permits are lower than this time last year as are building permits. We're not concerned, but we'll monitor the situation. Motor vehicles, it's, there's not, still not a lot of cars out there for people to buy, and people aren't buying the high-end, high, high-end ones, so. Just a reminder that the NHMA's annual conference is the 15th and 16th, and I'm sorry for everybody for that night, but there is a council meeting, so dinner.
No banquet.
No banquet. This, and if you're interested still, please get in touch with us so we can slide on. Finally, the Lamprey River footbridge, I was discussing, showed in my presentation that I was recommending a Warren article to replace the Lamprey River footbridge. After discussion with staff, we're going to postpone that article. We believe that there could be grant opportunities out there as well as other funding sources, so we want to pull back and try to go after those first. Engineering, the town agency doesn't believe it's dire, but we will need to monitor and replace it within five to 10 years. What we're going to do is going, we're going to post it for certain, you know, maintenance things, reduce salt. We're going to definitely, we're probably going to bollard in front of the end, so you know, we could drive a vehicle up there if need be, just to make sure we can preserve it a little bit longer. And that is all I have tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion for the, yeah, Councillor White?
Just had a question on the timing of the tax bill this year. Isn't it about a month early?
It is early. It's actually, this is when you're supposed to get it.
Right.
DRA has been, for years, was late. I mean, we were, we were issuing the due date to be about Christmas time, but DRA has sped up their process of review on their end, so yes, we are, we are ahead of schedule.
Any other questions? Councillor Blackstone?
If we run the sewer line over the bridge, doesn't that give us additional funding opportunities?
That's what we're going to look into as well.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We will move on to item number six, committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Okay. Oh, yeah. Councillor White?
Yeah, just as the budget committee met on the 23rd, and we just had a review of the CIP process and the CIP and projects that have been proposed, town, and we had looked at various requests. Yeah, it was pretty cut and dry, nothing too crazy.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Okay, do we need to pause? Do you know? Okay. All right, then let's keep going. Well, the next one's a resolutions ordinance in the second reading, and that's our budget. Yeah, so, why don't we take a short recess and, or?
Or just go to number nine.
Oh, good afternoon.
Were you locked out?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Indeed.
Excellent. Well, thanks for asking that. All right. You're just in time. We are now ready to move into resolutions and ordinances in the second reading, and the resolution on the table this evening is Resolution 2023-2024-17, the proposed fiscal year 25 town operating budget. And I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Have a second?
Wonderful. Okay. Move this now?
Yeah.
Okay. So after discussions and, and reductions in the FY '25 budget during the Town Council's budget workshop on Saturday, I would accept the following motion. So I'm, to move that we amend Resolution 2023-2024-17, approval of the fiscal year 2025 budget to read as follows. The annual budget for the town of New Market for fiscal year 2025 submitted to the Town Council by the Town Manager recommends to the municipal budget committee for its review the following appropriations. The general fund, $10,689,430. Special funds, $2,039,963. And enterprise water and sewer funds, $4,958,437, for a total of $17,687,830. Do I have a motion to approve that amendment?
I will make the motion to approve that amendment.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Are there, is, are there any discussions or questions on the amendment? Not the, the actual resolution, just the amendment? Not seeing any, I don't have any either. We, we discussed all this during the, during the workshop. Okay. So Wendy, if you could call the roll, please, for the amendment.
Councillor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councillor Dornblad?
Aye.
Councillor White?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Councillor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Excellent. And now, we will, are there any questions or debate on the amended Resolution 2023-2024-17, proposed town operating budget?
Regarding the entire?
Regarding the whole thing.
Yeah, I do have a mathematical error.
Okay. Councillor White?
On page two. Portion of average tax bill, it has FY '23 and FY '24 at the same amount. There is a difference of between the two, $242.50, which would mean that fiscal year '24 would be $11,354.34, and not the same amount as fiscal years '23.
Which, I'm sorry, which document are you looking at?
I am looking at.
The second one on?
In your, in your report.
Okay, in the packet?
In the packet, on number two. Page two, I mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't understand how you can get 200 plus 700 equals 200.
Is this, is this in the actual budget or in the report?
It's in the report.
Okay, that, that one we will fix, but it should not have an impact on the bottom line appropriation. The spreadsheets. Just want to make sure I'm on page two.
Yeah, I've seen it on page, on page two.
Oh, my report!
Yeah.
Oh, 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 I thought you meant the budget.
No, this is on the Town Manager's report, is that correct, Councillor White?
Oh, then I, I, my, let me just check that.
Okay.
I will get you an updated number on that. It's not on the budget. Okay.
Okay.
I was looking at the budget, that's my.
Okay.
Issue. I apologize. I'll, I'll get a new number for the council on my, on my report.
Excellent. Okay. Any other discussion on the, on the town operating budget resolution? Okay.
Yes, thank you. I would like to briefly, before we take a vote, discuss the, the capital items. As we know, there's, and this tends to be true most years, there is a significant difference between the amounts that department heads and the CIP committee, by extension in a way, proposed, and between that and the Town Manager's proposed budget that we're discussing here today. And I understand that cuts have to be made, and, you know, the town cannot afford endless amount of spending, and I, I appreciate that. I'm wondering, however, since the, you know, the arguments for the, the requested amounts by the department heads were quite persuasive, persuasive enough to convince the CIP committee that they were valid, and this happens kind, you know, fairly regularly, how do we, how do we address that in the year going forward, since there is a large difference? And what are the expectations there? How do we, how does that get, get worked through? Are we looking to raise funds from third parties through grant amounts, like grant funds? Or how does that, how does that work itself out usually? And what is the expectation for, for this year?
Well, it's a couple, couple-fold. One, the director of community development is revamping the CIP process.
Sure.
So to be more responsive to that aspect. Another item that we are going to be looking at is how do, how we fund some of these projects. Many years, we were doing what smaller municipalities in New Hampshire does, and exactly that's put money into capital reserve funds. As you saw today from the memo that Councilor Lamatina asked some questions about our debt limits, and how very little debt that we have. That will be probably one of the ways that we would address in the future. If you go to larger communities, just in our area, Dover and Portsmouth, annually they'll issue debt to do capital projects to cover it. And once the debt's retired, you issue new debt. That's not a bad thing, as most people know, especially for municipalities. And that will be something that we will be looking at in the future, is to cover this not with capital reserves, but with debt. That way, you're not, as, as we discussed, we build up this money, and by the time we build up the money, the amount that we need to raise isn't, it's not enough.
Right.
So that's an additional thing that we'll be looking at in the future. But the first step is to get the process redone through the CIP committee. A lot of the, I mean, a lot of larger projects are being done. It's just, it's, like I said, they use it more as a, a safety net for smaller, for small things, replacing the dispatch center, those kind of items that, or if something goes wrong, they can go in there and take the money out. It's not truly what it used to be, where you build it up, and in five years, you buy a fire trucker situation, just because of the value.
Right.
Of those now.
So, so there is, there is a plan that?
Yeah, we'll start addressing it.
Right. And, and how, how, how is the, how is the Town Council going to participate in that?
You would actually have to approve any debt that we issue.
Right, but I, I mean, before getting there. I mean, you know, just a change in the, in the way that we are approaching financing capital investments in this actual.
We'll, you know, we'll come to the council with changes in the policies, and it's also just the way we do, do business, which you'll be approving, that's, it's just, it's a seat, it's more of a mental change of how we do it, not a written, necessarily. But you'll see what, you'll see reductions in contribution to capital reserve fund. Perfect example is that the fire chief came in to me this week, and he wanted to purchase a new stretcher, and he wanted to lease it. And I said, well, we, we don't, I don't have authority to sign a lease, we have to go to the council, and it may be easier and cheaper if we, because you have that capital reserve built up. That's a place where you hit, you take it from there, so we can get that down. But you'll probably, you'll be seeing a lot more leases, and large projects will be bonds. So it's more of a seat, of a move, like a operational change.
So, so basically what you're saying is New Market is growing up?
Absolutely. That's, from the, from the day I got here 10 years ago, that's what I've been trying to get them to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dornblad. Any other questions or discussion about the budget? I'd just like to thank the Town Manager and all the department heads for, and, and committee chairs for all the work that they did, making these requests and putting these budgets together. I know it takes a tremendous amount of time, and, and just very appreciative of all of the, all the effort and care that the departments, that the departments take to, to be forward-thinking both about the needs of the town and the constituents. There are no other questions or discussion? Wendy, if you could call the roll.
Councillor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councillor Dornblad?
Aye.
Councillor White?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Councillor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Councillor Dornblad, I think your mic is off again.
I did turn it on.
Sometimes it just.
Why?
Spite. Okay. Next item on the agenda are nominations, appointments, and elections. We have three this evening.
Actually?
Town Manager.
Ms. Cody is asking to withdraw her nomination as an alternate member for the Arts, Culture and Tourism Commission at this time. So you have two this evening.
We have two this evening. Is there any action we need to take on that, or just cross off?
No, we need to just as well, yeah.
Okay. So then, the first, the first appointment is Jenny Ulett, and that's an appointment to the Energy and Environmental Advisory Committee with a term expiring April 2025. I would accept a motion to approve that appointment.
Sorry. So moved. And I'll second.
Okay. Any, any questions or discussion about Ms. Ulett? Does anyone know Jenny?
I do not. I, I know her through a friend.
Okay.
But yes, I've had a few conversations with her.
All right. Then if there's no discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Councillor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councillor Dornblad?
Aye.
Councillor White?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Councillor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. And the other one is Gerald Martin, nomination for reappointment to the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, the LRIC, with a term expiring in 2028. And do I have a motion to approve that appointment?
I will make a motion.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any comments or discussion about Mr. Martin's appointment? Okay. I appreciated the, checking the items that were the most, of most interest to Mr. Martin, and he has placed others, please specify, helping where I can, feet on the ground. And we appreciate the, the service, and I'm delighted that he's choosing, that he's asking for reappointment. There are no other questions or discussion? If you could call the roll.
Councillor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councillor Dornblad?
Aye.
Councillor White?
Aye.
Councillor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councillor Ward?
Aye.
Councillor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Excellent. Okay. And then item 10, resolutions and ordinances in the first reading this evening, there are six. So settle in, get some cocoa. All right. First resolution, Resolution 2023-2024-18, the American Rescue Act Fund Grant Authorization. Whereas the town is eligible to receive a $500,000 American Rescue Act Fund grant for its septic receiving station project, and whereas in order to receive the grants, Town Council must pass a vote to enter into an American Rescue Act Fund grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to fund the sludge thickener and collection system projects. Now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the Town Council authorizes the Town Manager to enter into an American Rescue Act Fund grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services and grants authority to the Town Manager to enter into the ARPA grant agreement and to execute any documents which may be necessary to effectuate the septic receiving station project. Sponsored by Chair Connolly by request, first reading November 1st, 2023. Bonus points for the use of the word "effectuate." Okay. Next resolution, 2020, Resolution 2023-2024-19, Septic Receiving Station Purchase. Whereas the town of New Market is in the process of designing and constructing a new septic receiving statement, station at the wastewater treatment facility, and whereas the town went out to bid for a septic receiving station, and whereas the town received a bid from Huber Technology for $295,444 for a new septic receiving station, and whereas the bid process and bid have been reviewed and approved by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the New Market Town Council authorizes $295,444 to be withdrawn from the Septic Receiving Improvements Capital Reserve Fund to purchase the septic receiving statement equipment, station equipment, sponsored by Chair Connolly by request, first reading November 1st, 2023. All right. Next one, Resolution 2023-2024-20, authorizing the Town Manager to execute a lease agreement with the New Market Community Development Corporation for the Dame Road Lot. Whereas the New Market Community Development Corporation owns an empty paved lot at the corner of Dame Road and North Main Street, known as the Dame Road Lot, and whereas it is the wish of the Town Council to expand parking opportunities in the downtown area, now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the New Market Town Council hereby authorizes the Town Manager to enter into a five-year lease agreement with the NCDC. with the N C D C for the lot known as the Dame Road Lot, One Dame Road, Tax Map U2, Lot 293, located at the northeastern corner of Dame Road and North Main Street in the town of New Market, New Hampshire, for the purpose of providing parking or other uses which brings good character and economic opportunities to the community. And further be it resolved, upon approval, the payment in lieu of taxes agreement for this parcel will be terminated and the town shall cover any property owner's insurance for said lot. Sponsored by Chair Conley for request, first reading November 1st, 2023. All right. Next resolution, 2023, 2024-21. Warrant article for the issuance of $300,000 bonds for the purpose of water infrastructure improvements to replace water system services in compliance with the federal lead and copper rule. Whereas it is the wish of the town council to include on the town warrant the following proposed warrant article for the issuance of $300,000 in bonds for the purpose of water infrastructure improvements to replace water system services in compliance with the federal lead and copper rule. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate this, appropriate the sum of $1,750,000 and no sense, $1,750,000, for the purpose of rehabilitating the sewer collection system. Such sum to be raised by the issuance of serial bonds or notes not to exceed $1,750,000 under and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, N H R S A 331, et cetera, et sec, as amended. And to authorize the town council to issue, negotiate such bonds or notes, and further to determine the date, term of payment, and rate of interest thereon. Further to take such other actions as may be necessary to affect the issuance, negotiation, sale, and delivery of such bonds or notes as shall be in the best interest of the town of New Market, New Hampshire. Additionally, to authorize the town council to apply for, receive, and expend federal and state grants which may at any time become available in accordance with R S A 3195B. And also to apply for, receive, and expend money from other governmental unit or private source to be used for purposes which the town council may legally appropriate money. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to $612,500 in principal forgiveness from the State Revolving Fund Loan Program. Now therefore be it resolved that the New Market, by the New Market Town Council, that the New Market Town Council include the above proposed warrant article on the town warrant and recommend the warrant article for passage. Sponsored by Chair Conley for request, first reading November 1st, 2023. We're getting there. Um, the next resolution is 2023, 2024-22, and another warrant article for the issuance of $1,750,000 bonds for the purpose of rehabilitating the sewer collection system. This is different than the one that we just did?
Yeah. That should be, that's, hold on.
I think, I got confused because, um, the, the title of the, of the last one was 300,000, but the text was 1,750.
Oh, okay. We're gonna have to, you just read this one.
I just read that one.
So we're gonna have a new one at the next meeting for 300.
Okay.
So that one will be done.
I thought the 300 was what you actually had to pay back. That's
Let me just check.
Okay. I did too, but it was, it was a little confusing, and it does look like the text of the two warrant articles are the same.
Yeah.
They are pretty, very close to the same because they're bond notes. One is, we'll have to pay 600. I'll pay 1.1. I closed it out. Yeah. No, we have to get you a new resolution for the 300.
Okay.
So you have, you read 2023-24-22 already. So now you're on
Excellent.
Moonlight Brook.
Okay. Our final resolution, um, in the first reading this evening is 2023, 2024-23, and this is another warrant article for the issuance of $73,500 in notes, bonds, for the purpose of, for the purpose of, for the purpose of stormwater planning work relative to investigating and identifying potential sources of pollution within the Moonlight Brook watershed. Whereas it is the wish of the town council to include on the town warrant the following proposed warrant article for the issuance of $73,500 in notes, bonds, for the purpose of stormwater planning work relative to investigating and identifying potential sources of pollution within the Moonlight Brook watershed. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $73,500 and no sense for the purpose of stormwater planning work relative to investigating and identifying potential sources of pollution within the Moonlight Brook watershed in accordance with the state and federal water quality guidelines, the project. Such sum to be raised by the issuance of serial bonds or notes not to exceed $73,500 in accordance with provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, New Hampshire R S A Chapter 33, and to authorize the town council and treasurer to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes to determine the rate of interest thereon and to take such actions as may be necessary to affect the issuance, negotiation, sale, or delivery of such bonds or notes as shall be in the best interest of the town. And additionally, to authorize the town to apply for and accept grants or other funds to reduce the amounts to be made, repaid on such bonds or notes, and participate in the State Revolving Fund, S R F, established in R S A 48614 for this purpose. This project is contingent upon approval of a clean water S R F loan, which may include up to 100% of loan principal forgiveness. Now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the New Market Town Council include the above proposed warrant article on the town warrant and recommend the warrant article for passage. Sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading November 1st, 2023. All right. And that concludes our resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. Thank you so much, everybody, for your patience there. Um, we're on to new business and correspondence. First item is correspondence to the town council. Is there any correspondence?
There's none.
Okay. Then our next item is closing, um, comments. Do any of, do any town councilor have any closing comments this evening? Counsel Blackstone?
So, um, I haven't mentioned this in a long time, but we're now getting to cold weather, and are, are we in any danger of getting a sign for the parking wreck before it snows or?
I, I drove by the other day, and I will get an update on that, where it is. I know they were, um, sign companies backed up making them too, but I'll find out where it is.
Okay. Because last time you reported, it wasn't the sign company, it was the Department of, what is it, Interior, what, Housing?
Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority.
Yep. They had issues too.
Yeah.
It's not as easy as just putting up a sign.
Yeah.
But I was, I, yeah, I drove by the other day and thought the same thing, so I'll find out.
Any other comments, closing comments?
Oh, can I make one more comment?
You may, Counsel Blackstone.
I wanted to, I got the lines on the parking on Central Street, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Nice. Okay. Um, hearing none. Our next meeting is November 15th, 2023. If there are no objections, I will consider us adjourned. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you.